The City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is January 24, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code, Section 594-53 subdivision Echo of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code 54950 at SEC, the Federal Americans with Disabilities. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page for participation information. Please stand. I'd like to call up Josiah Espinoza, please. Josiah will lead us in.
Yeah. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible to liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Josiah. Please remain standing.
Let's pray. Father, Lord, we just come before you this evening. And Lord, as we've just stated in our pledge to the allegiance of our flag, God, that we are one nation under God, though that includes Riverbank, California. And Lord, I thank you for this great city. Lord, it's an honor and a privilege and to be able to partner with you, Lord, as we continue to make this city what you have called it to be. Lord, I, first of all, I want to just ask and a special prayer for all the first responders in our city, the ones that are keeping it safe in this area. Lord, I just pray a wall of fire protection around them, keep them safe, Lord, as they continue to do their job. And as we conduct business tonight, Lord, I just pray, Father, that, Lord, this platform to be able to share our concerns and things that maybe are things that are on our mind about the direction we're going. We trust this great council, Lord, that is in our place, God, to represent us and be the go-between to the state of California and the people, knowing that, Lord, Riverbank's best interest is in their heart. So at the end of the day, Lord, I just pray for unity and that we're all one accord and that we will all do our part to make this place a great place to live. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribin.
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez. Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hernandez.
Here.
Mayor O'Brien.
Here. There will be no agenda changes today. Any council or authority member or staff has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Saying that, we're going to go proceed to presentations. The first one is recognition years of service to Eddie Negrete. Eddie, will you come on up? Now, it's rare that you have somebody dedicated to youth for 25 years, a quarter of a century. You know, a lot has happened during this time. And you've been able to hold them together during the pandemic and a lot of other trying times. So we really do appreciate. And from the city of Riverbank, in recognition for years of service from 2014 to 2022, presented to Eddie Negrete in sincere appreciation of your many years of outstanding and exceptional service within the Boy Scouts of America. Riverbank community is honored to have you as a leader and a role model. Wishing you the best for continued success. Signed today. Sir, thank you very much. Okay, I'll do whatever you tell me.
All right. Yeah, first of all, yeah, the time I'll never forget was the first camping trip we ever had. Modesto Reservoir, it was pouring rain. But, you know, we still had a fire going. We had, we were still able to cook. But it was, it was good times. I've done over eighty camping trips. Gosh, 120 miles hiking. Longest one was 20 miles in one day, and after 12 miles, you don't talk. You just keep walking. But throughout these whole years, I've had a great time. The scouts have always made it, you know, a pleasure to see them grow and develop. COVID was a little difficult, but I still kept doing meetings through Zoom. It was a little difficult and chaotic, but, you know, we got through it. I just wanted to keep, keep the program going for the city and, you know, and the scouts and, you know, make it a, you know, a, something that all kids in the community could participate in. And even though fees have gone up every year, you know, we, our troop, we try to keep the fees down and so everybody else could, anybody else could participate. So I had a great time and, you know, I'm also continuing to help wherever I can. It's just been, been changes in my work schedule. It's making it a little more difficult. But no, it's, I've always been there for all the scouts in the city.
Do you have any Eagle Scouts coming on up?
We have one that's getting ready. Nicholas, please stand up. He's getting, he's getting ready. Then the rest are just, you know, still, they're working on it, so.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Eddie, I want to say something real quick so everyone knows that Troop 1100 has helped me for, with the, for our call or any other kind of event where I need help from the Boy Scouts, they will be there. So I just want to say again from my heart, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move forward to item 72, Presentation Project Resolve. Good evening.
Good evening. I was hoping you would introduce me on your agenda. You have me down as Katie Trumpeter.
I know. When I saw that, that's not right.
No one's called me that since I was 12 years old.
What, last year?
Yes, thank you. Mayor O'Brien, Mayor Brian, Vice Mayor Hernandez, councilmembers delighted to have been asked here to present on a project that means a great deal to me, Project Resolve. My name is Kate Trumpeter. Just as an aside, my mom named Catherine, and she's always been a little bitter about the fact that people turned it into Katie because that wasn't ever her intention. So I'm just clarifying for her. I am a local to Stanislaus County Community Impact Consultant. I do a great deal of facilitation throughout the county. Project Resolve is just one project that I have currently going on. The Sheriff's Department and every other law enforcement executive in Stanislaus County have been together since the beginning, which I'll go over with you in just a moment. But I also want to express some appreciation to Chief Ridenhour, who's been steadfast in his commitment to this group of people and what we're learning together and have a lot of gratitude for his continued investment of time. So I believe I have, yeah, PowerPoint, which may or may not transition well to the screen, but we're going to go with it anyways. So Project Resolve has been going on since July of 2020. I'll talk about that in a second. We consider ourselves a network of people that are resolved to build and sustain trust between community and law enforcement. That's our primary goal. This is, forgive me, a presentation I put together for the League of Women Voters. It's a little outdated. I'm going to update you as we go. But where we started in July of 2020 was that Sheriff Jeff Dircksey called me. I had already been working with the Sheriff's Department as a coach and consultant after the more than one tragic events of the summer of 2020 and had a lot of curiosity and questions about the degree to which our community trusts its law enforcement agencies. He had a sense that we experienced a lot of goodwill in this community, but he also wanted to be sure for us to start talking to each other. So between the two of us, we decided to extend an invitation to every law enforcement executive in Stanislaus County plus equal number of diverse stakeholder groups. So we started off with a fairly small group, but it included every police department, the district attorney, probation, CHP, and the sheriff's department. And the idea was, we're going to have three meetings and we're going to figure everything out. And the secret is that I knew that that wasn't true, but I just had to wait for people to figure out. And then the idea was like, well, we're not quite where we wanted to be after three meetings. So let's have a few more and see what we're able to come up with. And ultimately, the goal was, can we find some initiatives or some programs that might help us to understand the strength of relationship that law enforcement either experiences or doesn't experience with communities in Stanislaus County? And then ultimately, where the group landed was that we may have to keep going and is likely going to have to keep going forever, which I'm going to expand upon in just a moment. So as I said, we've been meeting since July of 2020. We have what's called full network meetings, which again includes every law enforcement executive and our diverse stakeholder community members. Every time we're together, we do some degree of learning. I'll give you an example. We meet tomorrow morning and our law enforcement partners will be presenting to our community members on the process they go through to decide how and what they communicate after an officer-involved shooting. The community members get to ask questions. Law enforcement learns from the perspectives of our community members, and community members have an opportunity to experience some education about practices and policy and procedure. We've done dozens of those at this point on various topics, all at the request of our community members. We do a lot of sense-making together. I've encouraged all of them to spend time together in between our meetings. And then also, our community members have participated in ride-alongs, scenario training, forced option simulator as, you know, a chance to just have a deeper understanding of what our law enforcement community is doing and experiencing every day. Ultimately, though, it wasn't just about meetings. So the idea was that they would start to generate ideas together about ways in which we might be innovative in our approach to how we strengthen the relationships between community and law enforcement. So from probably about the third month, we've been what we call prototyping ideas, which I'll talk about in just a moment. So as you know, because I said we're meeting tomorrow, the group continues to grow and expand. And we're very excited about some of what we're learning. In the first year, we did commission a community-wide assessment. There was a lot of requests for data that we might be able to look at that could point us in the right direction. So we had a combination of inviting folks to tell their stories of what their lived experience has been throughout the county and otherwise in their relationships with law enforcement. And we wanted to go out and find, you know, get more information, both essentially the qualitative and quantitative information. So I wanted to just highlight a couple of things for you. Ultimately, the information we got back from this community-wide assessment was that, for the most part, our law enforcement agencies experience a good deal of trust and goodwill in this community. And that was lovely. And also, one of the very first things one of our law enforcement partners said was, well, if those aren't the people we should be thinking about, let's look at that 25% or so that are expressing a lack of trust in our local law enforcement agencies. So you can also see in this PowerPoint that those with less positive or more negative ratings of our local law enforcement agencies tended to be younger, and they were more likely to be people of color, Hispanic and BIPOC or Black Indigenous people of color residents. The other thing that we thought was important to call out that we learned was that, on the whole, people don't really make a distinction between law enforcement agencies in this community or otherwise. So if something bad happens in another state or another city, that's bad for Riverbank. It's bad for MPD. It's bad for Turlock. If something good happens for the Sheriff's Department, that's good for Riverbank. That's good for Turlock. That, on the whole, people don't necessarily separate law enforcement agencies from one another, which is just for us pointed to the need for us to continue to meet together because we can do our work in our individual organizations and jurisdictions. But ultimately, it matters what's happening across those boundaries, and we need to be learning together. Also, despite the positive ratings for law enforcement, the majority of residents did say that they were concerned about police violence. What that pointed to for us was that perception matters. And just as I was saying, that they're not making the distinction between law enforcement agencies, that the degree to which we experience goodwill between community and law enforcement is not just affected by what happens in people's backyards. It's affected by what happens across the country and what people watch in movies. And that ultimately, having trust and strong relationship in law enforcement is a very fragile state that needs to be tended to in an ongoing way. Because we have a hypothesis that if there's goodwill and trust between our communities and our law enforcement, our communities and our neighborhoods are going to be safer. And that's, that's why that matters to us. So a couple other things that I just want to point out that I've mentioned already is that as we did this work, you know, that impulse we had to meeting and program our way out of any tension or stress or stuckness we might be feeling in our communities isn't real. It takes time. We need to be willing to get curious and ask good questions and know that what made sense to us last week may not make sense this week. So that's one of the reasons we continue to meet. I've talked about how the existing goodwill is fragile and can be impacted by things far beyond our control. So we have to plan for that. And that ultimately, this kind of change in any context, whether we're talking about, you know, trust between community and law enforcement or otherwise, happens at the speed of trust. And so we have a heavy focus on developing relationships. So as we often say, our biggest expectation is that we can have hard conversations about things that don't make sense to us and that will stay at the table. So that's, we're like, we're inviting people to participate. And one of our expectations is that you just stick around, even when things get hard. We continue to recruit people to be a part of this network because we realize that we don't have all the diverse stakeholder groups that we would like to have in the room with us and that we need to start talking about what we're doing because we haven't, largely because this felt like a high emotion, hard conversation. And as you all know, as elected officials, that sometimes when you do that out in public, it's hard to keep going because you open yourselves up to lots of scrutiny and questions. And so Project Resolve has been slow to come out to everyone until we could build a really solid container for that work. Um, just, this is one of the last slides, and I know there's a lot of words on here, but just allow me to give you a couple of examples of some of the really tangible things that have come out of this. So I can say that there's been a lot of good work that's come out of just building these good, really good, strong relationships between these organizations, communities, and their law enforcement agencies. And I know that just our law enforcement agencies, by virtue of listening to the kinds of questions community members are asking, what they're confused about, what they have, like realness, they're really misinterpreting or have, you know, the wrong information about. They've changed, our law enforcement departments have changed internal practices and policies and procedures just through these conversations. So I'm delighted by their willingness to be influenced, right, by, by their community. What I can say, as I mentioned, this was developed in August, but if you can see, they call this our solutions portfolio. These are things that we're actively tracking. In the solutions in development, I can actually move the reentry and rehabilitation program over to solutions coming online. Project Resolve, along with Focus on Prevention and the County Behavioral Health and Recovery Department and the Community Corrections Partnership are working and have completed the program design for a reentry and rehabilitation program for Stanislaus County. I know you all are talking about school resource officers. So Project Resolve got to, or essentially, when we call them prototypes, we're just looking to see what's happening in the community that might help to build that goodwill and strong relationships. And we're wanting to learn. So we've had interesting conversations with high school students and so on. So we're just paying attention to what's happening there. And I know that many of you know that what's happening throughout the county, like with the city of Modesto and having a police civilian oversight committee, an independent auditor. We have an academy going on. Series is doing something called Shop Talks, which takes place in barber shops. We're collecting pre and post data, just so that we can learn about whether or not it develops those strong relationships that we're looking for and then coming back to the full group and sharing with one another. The last thing I'll say is that we're getting ready to do the community-wide assessment again. So two years after our first go at the community-wide assessment, we're measuring that again. Be delighted to share those results, of course, once that assessment is completed.
So.
Yes.
At this point, are there any questions from the council?
Just kind of curious, Kate. So the meeting that, that's her name, right?
Yep.
I'm just kind of curious, the meeting you guys are holding tomorrow. Have you guys held these meetings in other languages? Like, we have a majority-minority population here, so just kind of curious if those have happened also.
That's a great question. So to date, we haven't necessarily needed to have it done in a different language because it's not like it's an open-to-the-public.
Right.
Experience, but there has been more than one meeting where we've had participants who were monolingual Spanish, and we've brought in translation and interpretation services as that's needed.
Got it. And I understand it's a community-wide assessment. Is this broken up by cities?
It'll be broken up by zip codes.
By zip codes, got it. Yeah, so the only one, the only one that's kind of concerning on is bullet point three. If we back up two or three slides there, just because, you know, the younger population, we do have, like I said, a majority-minority here. So just, you know, ways we can improve the relationships. And that's why one of the things I would like to see moving forward would be a bilingual, another community resource officer that's bilingual, that's, you know, interacting with, with our youth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. I look forward to tomorrow.
Me too. Thank you so much for having me.
Appreciate it. Okay, public comment. At this time, members of the public may, put on my glasses, comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another person under state law. Matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. May I have public comment, please? Come on up. Sir, it has been many years. How are you doing?
Thank you very much so far.
Good.
Wonderful. Thank you to God. I'm a member of this from 6261 Roselle Avenue. For the last 12 years. You couldn't find your glasses. I cannot find my notes. There. The reason why I'm here, even though it took a minute already to find my notes, the avenue so Patterson Road and Palmer have been flooding for years, of course. I had a Mr. Millili in the past that was the director of Public Works in Riverbank. And he went and checked the one on Sierra and Palmer block away from there. And I think I came about three different times to plead to fix up that flood that was there on Sierra. Now it's Patterson where it's concerning me because for so many years it's been flooding. And only recently, the city of Riverbank has started coming over and draining. Well, my concern is with children, that they have a stop, a school bus stop. And the lady from the corner, that is the owner of the corner of the taco truck. And she said that she saw one time when the kids got off the bus, when they cross the street, one pushed the other one into the water. That's not necessary. If they had a sidewalk that they can walk on, on both sides, there is a sidewalk. But of course, it's flooded all the way up to the properties, you know. And it's a shame, really. Because in Roselle, I wanted a stop sign for a long time. And I believe they did change the priorities of eight to nine months, something like that. When I went and insisted, insisted, then finally did it because the children were going to the street when the, when the ones that were picked up, the family goes onto the street, the cars don't care. The car gets to go around them. Boom. Okay? I would like, love to have that drain in the name of three older people that are directly affected. And if you can do something about the alley that takes from Carl Junior on Calendar, if you want to call it one way, all the way to Parsley, across from the theater. The three or four houses before on Parsley are really nice space in front of the houses. But from there on down, Tijuana is really very good streets comparing to that alley. Because in Tijuana, you know why they drive like this, like this, like this? Because they are trying to get away from the potholes. Okay? They came too much for their tires, for the shocks, et cetera. Anyway.
Your time has.
I, I thank you very much on whatever you do.
But before you leave, I want to tell you that, first off, jurisdiction on, on 108 is the state. We've been working with them. We also have.
Alley?
If it goes to Calendar or to 108, it is, it is the state. The other thing is that at Roselle and Patterson, we're going to do a multimillion-dollar project as soon as we can get right away. And I'll fix what you were talking about there.
Until then.
Until then, we have to wait to get. If it was your property and you didn't sell it to us, we can't do anything. Okay? Thank you very much.
Also.
No, that's enough. Next, please.
I'll tell you next meeting.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Canrato. I live on Hoag Road. I'm here to let you know that I oppose the proposed Riverwalk development. Hello, Mr. O'Brien and Vice Mayor Rachel Hernandez and councilmembers Luisa Ribe and new member Leanne Jones Cruz and Mary Marquinez. I think you already know my spiel. It's prime agricultural land, designated prime agricultural land. It's on a flood plain. I think you already know my spiel. It's prime agricultural land designated prime agricultural land. It's on a flood plain. There's a aquifer that will be paved over if homes are built there that will prevent the recharge of that aquifer. It's along the San Osaslas River, which means river habitat and corridors and animals affected. There's infrastructure such as the sewer, the water, traffic, emergency services, there's ambulance, fire, police, sheriff. There. This land is very arable, very wonderful agricultural land. We know how much we what wonderful quality, high quality produce we produce in California. And you go even to state over to Arizona or back east and the, the quality of the produce diminishes significantly. The, there's a university in the Midwest that was just given a $750,000 grant to research producing drought crops, plants for crops. And as you know, we've had a lot of flooding in our area recently. And something, because I know that you have the best interests of your city at heart. But the, the homes that have been recently flooded, those homeowners are suing the city for their new residential development being flooded, being ruined with water, water from flooding. Anyway, so please consider, continue to consider the pros and cons of this development. And I hope very sincerely that you go know on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor, we have one on Zoom too.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Jacob Folder. I'm here on behalf of Senator Marie Alvarado Gill. I've already met a few of you at previous events, but just wanted to reintroduce myself and say that the senator is looking forward to working with the city of Riverbank in the future. If there's any sort of assistance we can provide to residents in terms of constituent service, please feel free to reach out to our office. Also, I'll be providing legislative updates on what's going on in the Capitol. Actually, just wanted to provide a brief update on what the senator has been doing since being sworn on December 5th. She's been touring nine of the 13 counties in our district. Her focus this year will be on a fire insurance reform, water storage, and preventing early release for violent criminals. She'll be serving as chair on the Human Services Committee. And she'll be a member of the Agriculture, Veterans Affairs, Business Professions and Finance, Insurance and Government Operations Committees. So just wanted to share that with you. And I have the senator's business cards. I don't have my own yet, but just want to share the senator's. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions for him before we let him go? That's more of a presentation then. Okay. Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with her. We have someone in Zoom?
Yes.
Ms. Eggers, if you can hear us, if you can unmute, please. Ms. Eggers? If you can hear us, if you can please unmute in the prompt.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name's Jamie Eggers. I live at seventy-seven thirty McHenry Avenue. That's in the unincorporated area of San Osaslas County, but within the proposed project area of the Riverwalk development. You've heard from me many times. I've told you about the state of California's Department of Conservation program to map all ag lands of 10 acres or greater. And nearly all of the parcels within the proposed project area are mapped and they have been designated as prime agricultural land or lands of statewide importance. Those are the two highest categories in their mapping program. In my opinion, this area is not suitable for housing development. Housing should be placed on soils of lesser quality. I just wanted to point out tonight that now that we've dried out a little bit from all of the rains, we are starting to see our brand new almond trees bud out. And before you know it, everything will be in bloom. And the lands behind us, which are proposed for development, are all tilled up and ready for the next crop. So again, my point is that crops should have priority and homes should be placed on soils of lesser quality. Thank you.
That's it? Any other public comment? All right. So we're going to continue on with the consent calendar consisting of item nine, one, wave reading. Nine, three, a resolution accepting the public improvement for DMG Development LP for Crossroads West Unit One. Item nine, four, resolution approving a reimbursement agreement with DMG Development LP regarding city pavement for joint trench work along Oakdale Road in connection with Crossroads West specific plan. Item nine, five, second reading by title only on a proposed ordinance amending Title fifteen Building Regulations Adoption of Standard Codes by repealing in their entirety Section one five zero point zero one Administrative Code through one five zero point one six solar photovoltaic power systems and substituting them with new sections one five zero point one zero, zero, one through one five zero point one six and adopting their reference by reference, the twenty twenty-three California Administrative Building Residential Electrical Mechanical Plumbing Energy existing building, historical building, fire and green building standards and solar photovoltaic power systems and amending Title fifteen Land Usage, Chapter one five seven Water Efficient Landscape and Irrigation Section one five seven point zero one Purpose and Intent. Item nine, six, second reading of the Summer Fair Rezone Ordinance. Item nine, seven, second reading by title only of a proposed ordinance amending Title fifteen Section one five three point zero zero three Definition, Section one five three point zero three one Usage permitted. Section one five zero three point zero four six Uses permit. Section one five three point zero six one Uses permitted. Section one five three point zero six seven Uses permitted and adding Sections one five three point one seven zero to one five three point one seven seven related to tiny house village. We'll go back to item nine point two. Before I read that in, would you make the recommended changes?
Mayor and council for item nine point two, the draft minutes need to, of January 10th, twenty twenty-three need to reflect. Councilmember Luisa Ribe was appointed as the primary for San Osaslas OES Disaster Council. And the council, the meetings for the year twenty twenty-three are July 11th, not July 8th and August 8th, not August 11th.
Okay, with those changes, item nine, two, the approval of the January 10th, twenty twenty-three City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes. Do we have any comments or anyone wishing to pull an item on consent? Do I have any consideration?
I'll make a motion that we consider the consent calendar as stated with the corrections.
We have a motion to approve and a second to consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martix?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item eleven, one, unfinished business. Thunderbolt Wood Treating Waiver or Reduction Request for System Development Fees.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you'd mentioned, this is the Thunderbolt Wood Treating System Development Fees waiver request. So what are system development fees? It's a fees charged for a change in use, new construction, including the expansion of or addition to an existing non-residential structure. It's to help mitigate an unfunded, unfunded portion of the project, which would be determined to have an impact on the city's systems. So Thunderbolt proposes to install a structure of 24,200 square feet, which they have described as a carport type structure. There are no walls, so it's not an enclosed building. These are the fees that were create, that came out of our computer system determining what the system development fees are. And I think the, the total ends up being three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, which is substantial for this type of a structure. So they request a waiver or reduction of that in fees. And the reasoning is, for example, let me go back one here. The, the street and public work fees, which is a hundred and fifty-five thousand and some change. So they are not adding any additional operations to this structure, nor are they adding any employees. So therefore, it can be seen that the transportation system around the, the plant will not be affected. The next one is water. As I mentioned, there are no sides on this building. There's no restroom. There are sprinklers, but this, having the sprinklers does not substantially change the overall demand on the city's, city's water system. They can be hooked up to an existing hydrant that's on site. Next is the storm drain. They have a Title twenty-seven Waste Discharge Permit and an Industrial Stormwater General Permit that they need to adhere to. Placing this covered structure over the existing operations will keep some of the storm water from being contaminated and able to be captured and used in other places on the site. So they are not adding any capacity to the city sewer system. The next one is police. We do not see that as having a negative impact on our PD. The structure doesn't need any additional type of policing. And then the, the five percent admin fee should be waived as well. As I'd mentioned, that is a percentage. So if there are no fees being charged, if the fees are being waived on this project, then there is no, nothing to determine as far as the administrative percentage goes. So having gone through all these fees with both staff and with our city attorneys, we feel that the council could determine that the applicant statements within their requests are valid and that the project should not be subject to the system development fees. And that's all I have as far as a presentation goes, but the applicants are here as well if you have some questions.
Questions? I have a couple. Didn't Thunderbolt come before, beforehand with other waivers or delayed payments?
Correct.
Are they caught up now?
Well, from the twenty twelve, there is still a lien on the property. And twenty seventeen, they came back in front of you to talk about that lien and it was not resolved. They were, they or staff were supposed to come back with additional information and that didn't happen. And so now we have this new building with a separate request.
Okay. What is the county's fees on this structure?
The county fees are $20,000 and they, it would be up to them to talk to the county about waiving those fees. We collect the county fees, but we don't issue them or determine them.
So mayor, with regards to the two thousand and twelve fees, we have had discussions with their attorneys. The lien will remain until such time that they bring forward any evidence that the city council can review with regards to a potential waiver for those.
Is there any other questions before I open it up? You know, we, we've been asked to waive a lot of fees. I'd like to be caught up sometime. Do we have a deadline when we want to get caught up with any outstanding resolution, outstanding fees or liens?
To my knowledge, this would be the only one that's currently outstanding. But we do take those on an as needed basis for different types of developments that may come up in the future.
Okay. And so you're talking storm water. Why do you say no storm water fees?
So they actually capture their storm water on site and are required to treat it based on the MS four permit that they hold. And so it really doesn't impact our storm water. And in actuality, the structure will avoid any contamination of any storm water that happens. So they really benefit from it because there's less treatment that has to happen to that water.
Okay. And the sprinkler system is, is that for requirement by the fire department?
That is correct because it is a roof and it would have treated lumber and chemicals beneath it.
And that fire system is hooked up, will be hooked up or what?
Yes, it will be hooked up.
All right. Any questions, comments? All right. All right. Anyone from the public wishing to comment?
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien and members of the city council. My name is Narik Naragi and I'm an attorney with Downey Brands and I'm here on behalf of my client, Leonard the Volvo Construction in regard to the building permit to install a metal cover over an existing process area at Thunderbolt. And Mr. LaValvo is here this evening. As just explained by Ms. Kenny, the item is on the agenda tonight because the city assessed nearly $400,000 in system development fees as a condition to issuing the building permit for the installation of the cover, which is an amount that is almost the cost of the entire project itself. As addressed in my December first correspondence, which is attached as attachment four to the staff report, the law is clear that under these circumstances, when the project has no impact on city facilities or services, impact fees, such as the city's system development fees are not allowed. Impact fees can only be charged when a project places a new burden on the city's facilities. Here, not only does the project not place a new burden on the city, all the evidence shows this project will provide substantial water conservation and environmental benefits. To understand the benefits and the purpose behind installing the metal cover requires an understanding of Thunderbolt's storm water management system. Currently, Thunderbolt captures rainwater that comes into contact with the treatment area and retains it in holding tanks. Since the water contains chemical residue, the reclaimed water can only be reused in one specific process in the wood treating plant and not in the other treatment processes that incur in other areas of Thunderbolt's facility, which leaves Thunderbolt having to store much more water than it could ever possibly reuse in the foregoing treatment process, which in turn creates a bottleneck in the system. Since the proposed metal cover will capture the runoff from rainfall before it comes into contact with the chemical residue within the treatment area, the clean water can be stored, used and reused in other areas of Thunderbolt's treatment process, significantly aiding Thunderbolt's ongoing water conservation efforts and minimizing, if not eliminating its reliance on its wastewater discharge permit from the city that allows Thunderbolt to dispose of treated storm water to the city sewer as a backup measure. Since the installation of the metal cover will not impose any additional impacts on city facilities or services and in fact, will only result in numerous benefits to the city and the landowner, there is no doubt the city is legally prohibited from imposing these fees. And we request the council follow staff's recommendation and waive all system development fees originally applied to this building permit. And we have Carrie Casey here as well, who is the And we have Carrie Casey here as well, who is the engineer on the project, if you have any project-specific questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, no more comments. I'll bring it back for consideration.
So I I do find that the request is valid, so I'll make a motion to approve item eleven point one.
I'll second the motion.
Before I proceed on that, county fees, would they fall under the same? They should fall under the same.
But that would be a determination made by the county.
Oh, no, no, I understand that. I understand that. They have their system development. They have their their CPPs.
It's the same three, Mayor. And I want to thank Ms. Naragi for her cooperation in this matter. Once we received the backup and not just the request, we concur, and things went very smoothly.
All right, good.
May I say one more thing as well? When the building permit set was submitted for the building permit, we just got the standard plans that come with the building itself. So we have nothing that documents how the water will be captured and routed to their system. So we would like to have them submit some documentation showing that process, so we have that for our files.
Okay, thank you. Just make sure they do that. All right, we had a motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Liba?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Brian?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item twelve one, you're welcome, thank you. Resolution approving an agreement between the City of Riverbank and Riverbank Unified School District for School Resource Officer Services and authorizing the city manager to finalize and execute said agreement.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item has been many years in the making. Discussions had between the city, Riverbank Unified School District, and the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department. Just a little bit of history, we the school district actually had an SRO position prior to two thousand seven, but unfortunately, due to budget cuts, it was removed. Stanislaus County probation then took over and provided services until two thousand fifteen. And so and since such time, there has no been, there has not been any law enforcement presence on site. Riverbank Unified School District, the city, and the sheriff's department initiated discussions to reestablish this SRO position. Just to give some brief information, some of the benefits that we see of a school resource officer program is that it will provide a safe learning environment for our nation's schools, provide valuable resources to school staff members, and foster positive relationships between youth and law enforcement. You heard earlier in the presentation by Project Resolve that there is some work that needs to be done with regards to that relationship between law enforcement and our students. School resource officers are educators, informal counselors and mentors, and law enforcement officers first and foremost. Local agencies need the resources and flexibility to establish school resource officer programs that will encourage partnerships between schools and local law enforcements and develop innovative ways in which to make our schools safe. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the terms of the agreement. The agreement is between the City of Riverbank and Riverbank Unified School District, as it is the city who holds the contract with the sheriff's department. The deputy that's assigned to the SRO position will remain an employee of the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department. The term is currently for one year. We do have this original term set to expire six thirty of two thousand twenty-four, as we are now more than midway through this school year. The city will be responsible for paying the SRO salary, which means we will be billed for it on a monthly basis in accordance with the current agreement that we have with the sheriff's department. But Riverbank Unified agrees to reimburse the city for up to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in annual costs associated with that salary and benefits of the SRO. And we will bill them monthly as well as we're receiving invoices from the county. The duty hours that have been established are from seven thirty AM until three thirty PM, which is the normal school hours. Unless that's modified by mutual agreement, of course, they will need to coordinate that through Chief Ridenhour and our police services in the event that they're needed for special events and any other student outreach events. Insurance, both the school district and the city will indemnify each other. So we will be pulling insurance documents to add each other as additional insureds. Both parties agree to indemnify, hold harmless, and defend each other in the events of any complaints that are received. And so now I'd like to bring up Ms. Barbara Brown. She is the Director of Student Services with Riverbank Unified School District, who's going to go over some information from the county's perspective, I mean, from the school district's perspective. Apologies.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. Can you make that a little bit bigger? I'm sorry, I can't I can't see it. This is just some examples of what a school resource officer can do for schools. As was presented earlier, they are become mentors, they develop, the most important thing is developing relationships with our students. It is shown through research that the discipline incidents go down, drug incidents go down, just everyday kinds of fighting go down when a law enforcement officer is on our campuses. I myself worked for Modesto City Schools for eighteen years when Modesto Police Department had police officers at the high schools. And it was it was very telling to have that person there. And it's not an authoritative position, it is a relationship-building position. And some children, their only interaction with police officers can be traumatizing if there's conflict in the home and they're seeing a police officer come into their home. When there's a police officer on a school and they see him every day, they see him in a different light. So we have seen, as I said, discipline, drug incidents, alcohol have reduced with the presence of an officer. They also help with, they can do presentations to our to our sites. They can work as a community liaison. We have incidents when we have incidents that we have to call law enforcement now. Sometimes we have to wait a while before they get to the school site and then do an investigation or speak with parents or students. So it would be very nice to have a person that's on our campus and would be located at the high school. However, they could offer assistance to any of our school sites and at any of our administrators that would need it. Well, I kind of talked about this a little bit, but we have what's called a site intervention team process to support students who are having difficulties academically, socially, emotionally, or have mental health issues. Part of this person's role could sit on these teams to provide those kinds of supports that that would be needed for a student. So they we would include them in our safety committees and our site intervention team at the school sites, and they would have a different insight to some of the things that maybe students may be going through.
And that actually is the end of our presentation. We're both available for any questions, me on behalf of the city, Barbara or Ms. Brown on behalf of the school district. And then, of course, Chief Ridenhour can also make any comments regarding the discussions that have been had as part of the negotiation of the contract on behalf of the sheriff's department.
Thank you. Questions?
Sure. So I got a got a couple of comments. Thank you for that presentation. So I would like to just kind of touch, you know, just kind of discuss some of the stuff that we didn't see there. And then just for context for the council, the the HR six seventy-two that was mentioned in the agenda, just so just for reference, you know, it 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 never received a vote coming out of the committee. So that was the the national push to put SROs across the country. It just died in the committee. There wasn't real support for that. I have a few issues with this. So there are several agencies that have already kind of analyzed SROs, right? So Journal of Adolescent Health, they found no evidence that SROs lessen the severity of school shootings, that they actually make it worse. So the journalist kind of goes into explaining the perpetrator, you know, maybe suicidal, familiar with the school, knows that the officer is there, and so they come in heavily armed, right? Civil rights data shows an increase in school-related arrests when an SRO is on campus. If a student is if a student's arrested, this can follow them with when they're filling out their college application, right? So this this carries on through their entire life. U.S. Department of Education data shows students with disabilities are three times more likely to be arrested. These these agents agencies pointed out, SROs do not deter school shootings. In fact, they found two occasions in the last twenty years where an SRO stopped a school shooter, two occasions in twenty years. So there's a gray area when an SRO is involved in handling discipline. Right? When it's when they're handling, when it's handled by law enforcement or school staff, right? There's that kind of gray area, so that to me is a is is an issue. Our law enforcement, they go through a ton of training. They go six hundred and sixty-four hours of basic law enforcement training. So to see only an additional eight hours of SRO training, I mean, to me, they're trained as law enforcement in my in my in my eyes. I'm a gun owner, and I want meaningful gun laws that will stop someone from not, you know, who should not have a gun by obtaining it legally or illegally. USA Gun Homicide Rates, Governor Newsom just announced this yesterday, is twenty-six times higher than any other country. Mental illness is the same in every other country, right? We have, we know, we know what the main problem is. And we have to address the real cause. I do believe schools should be prepared. We had earthquake drills when I was young. I never heard of SROs and school shootings when I was younger. But, you know, that was a while back for me. And I do want to protect kids wherever they are, because school shootings happen in churches, grocery stores, events. In twenty-four days, we've had over thirty-three mass shootings. We had one today at Happen Bay. So it's and I was at workplace incident, so it wasn't at a school. So our goal as a city, and I'm kind of speaking for myself here, probably most of staff is or or most of council is to have a correctly-staffed police department where technology is integrated, right, where we have the analysts, where they're catching this kind of activity online, and and we're being proactive about it. So we have expect, we have those expectations at a higher standard, and and response times are improved. So I'd like to see Stanislaus County Office of Education offer substance-of-use and violence prevention messaging in schools more frequently. And I and like I mentioned earlier, I'd like to have an additional full-time bilingual community resource officer or resource officer that can continue to build those relationships and ensure that we have a school safety plan that is up to date. So I will not be supporting this item. Thank you.
I have a comment. Being an employee of a neighboring city school district and an employee neighboring high school long ago were the days that we had an SRO on campus. And compared to nowadays where we don't, I am all for this this item. The SRO officers provided a lot of support. Right now, if we have any kind of incidences incidences, we're calling nine-one-one and having to wait for MPD to show up. And it was really nice to have someone right on campus there. They build relationships with students that normally wouldn't happen. And I'm I was really psyched to see that this is the the way that Riverbanks decided to go. And I knew I knew you from somewhere.
I had just realized that.
So I am for this one hundred percent, and I have nothing but positive things to say about SRO officers on campus.
I just think that it's a step, and it's the first step in going in the right direction. And I think that we ought to give it a try, and it's for a year, and, you know, just take note and see how it goes. And we don't have to renew the contract at the end of the year if it doesn't work out. But I I hope that it does, because I think it'll benefit everybody in the long run. Thank you.
So thank you for the information. And I mean, like, my colleagues here and everyone in the community, we don't take this lightly. So since October, at least October, I've been having conversations with public health leaders, folks who have knowledge of past SROs, friends in law enforcement, community members, board members, et cetera. And in that time, and just to reiterate, we've had just the twenty-four days, thirty mass shootings. I so Riverbank, I'm so proud of the city because it's always been so proactive in our approaches. And I can see how this can be considered a part of that. But I do want to challenge the community to be creative and defining public safety in a more expansive way. And so I think we're in a position where we're able to do that with a lot of the decisions we make in the city and in partnership. And so I admire the work that law enforcement does, and Project Resolve, I think, is so important to that conversation. But I think it's just part of a complex issue, and it requires complex solution.
Thank you. We're here to evaluate the contract between the city and the school district concerning resources that we have. That's what we're here to do, to evaluate. To pass judgment on your evaluation of what you need is not our role. That's not in our municipal boundaries, okay? That's outside our boundaries. That's now in your role. That is your government outside of our government. So we have resources that we are going to share. Does it suit the city? It does. Does it suit the school? To you, it does. So it's a win-win on both occasions. That's how we should approach this contract. Whether or not there'll be socioeconomic or or any other justice that goes along with that, that's the determination that you, as the employer, and the one who sets the rules, responsibilities, and the boundaries of the SRO. And and I commend you for moving forward on it. It's a role that's going to grow, it's going to change, morph, but that's if we approve it. But with that, I'm going to have to open it up for public comment. But I do think the school, it's not an easy decision for you. It was not one that you made just in a matter of weeks. It took years to get to this point. And I know. It took years to get to this point. We're at this point, so we'll see what the public has to say as we move forward.
Thank you.
Any public comment? You know the rules, Mr. Verbunis.
Good evening, Ramon Verbunis from sixty-two sixty-one Roselle Avenue. And it's kind of mixed feelings that I get about these people having to put a police officer in a school. Last year, there was a shooting in Texas with schoolchildren and two teachers. And they had the reports that the people, local police, they didn't go in there even though they were on time. They were afraid they might get shot. And they were there at the door, but they were afraid he was the shooter was on the other side of the door, and they might get shot and killed. There were a lot of heroes that day. And I don't think of having a police officer will resolve this type of things. And the small stuff can be taken by the school itself on not having really a police officer, but a guard, a guard duty that has pretty much the same roles, except resting a person, but can be a counselor, can be a can be a teacher, can be a friend of the students that are in trouble and trying to get them out of their shell and so on. But a police officer, no. It can be a security guard for the school with knowledge, of course, educated and so on. But let it be a civilian. No, no, no uniform belongs in a school. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comment? Saying none, I'm bringing it back to the council for consideration. Saying none, I'm bringing it back to the council for consideration.
I'd like to make some motion that we accept item 12.1 as stated.
I second.
We have motion to approve item 12.1. And a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Odebe?
No.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz? Vice Mayor Hernandez?
No.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-2.
Item 12.2, a resolution to authorize the city manager to submit application for grant funding under California Department of Water Resources 2022 Urban Community Drought Relief Program.
Mayor and council, Cody Bridgewater, our Public Works Director, will be providing the staff report on this item.
Mayor, members of the city council, my first presentation with you tonight. So I'm asking for money, but it's not from you. So item 12.2 is to authorize the city manager to submit an application for grant funding under the California Department of Water Resources 2022 Urban Community Drought Relief Program. Investigations into the modification of well number 10 to reduce its nitrate concentration and avoid wellhead treatment have not been successful. As you may remember, in October of '21, we had some nitrate hits on well 10, and we have since had to take that well offline due to the high levels of nitrates. City submitted an application for grant funding to the California Department of Emergency Services, or CAL OES, under the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program, which is the BRIC program. This is the same program that we submitted an application for the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. This application for well 10 was not successful and was not carried forward by CAL OES for submittal to FEMA. So now it is recommended that a grant application be prepared for design and construction of a nitrate treatment system for the city's well number 10 to be submitted to the California Department of Water Resources through the 2022 Urban Community Drought Relief Program. Here are some data that we had from some analyzing that took place on the well. After the initial rise in the nitrate levels, city staff attempted to pump the waste and flush out the nitrates to see if it was just a slug that came through. Unfortunately, it was not. We performed additional water quality profiling from different levels of the well. If you're familiar with how a well works, you'll have screened levels where the water flows into the pipe and your pump draws it up. So at these screened levels at approximately 125 feet, we were greater than 15 milligrams per liter. The state requirement is 10 milligrams per liter or less in order to be used as drinking water. At 165 to 185 feet, it was greater than 14. 210 to 230 feet, greater than 14, and below 230 feet, greater than 14 milligrams per liter as well. So the modification of the pumping zone without wellhead treatment is really not feasible based on the profile sampling information. We had the Division of Drinking Water review the results of the testing. And under the current conditions, the well cannot be brought back into production for the water system. Now, understand that this well produces between 1,000 and 1,400 gallons a minute, depending on the speed that it runs. So this is a significant production well for the city. So without it in the system, we are struggling to meet demand during the summertime when everybody's irrigating and it's hot and people are using water more frequently. So following the review of available background information developed by the city of Modesto, the city of Riverbanks' experience with well 10 is similar to what is being observed with many municipal wells in the northern and central part of the groundwater basin that we pull from. It is suspected that the high-nitrate groundwater is migrating into the deeper aquifers and that this process may be exacerbated by the decline in groundwater levels in the region. So since the contamination of well 10 by nitrate was not foreseen and the need for a major capital improvement not planned for, staff recommends pursuing grant funding to cover a significant portion of the cost of the remedial actions to bring the well back online using wellhead treatment. Assuming the project goes to construction by late 2023, estimated total capital cost of adding this treatment is approximately $4.3 million. The construction of the wellhead treatment with the estimated $4.3 million is what we are looking to obtain with the grant. We have currently spent approximately $332,000 in investigative work and maintenance to date of well 10 in order to combat this nitrate issue. So if successful, grant funding could reduce the cost to the city for implementing the treatment from a total of $4.3 million to anywhere from .4 to $1.1 million, depending on the level of grant funding that the state would give us. So city staff is requesting the city council to authorize the city of Riverbank city manager or designee to prepare and file an application for funding with the Department of Water Resources and take such other actions necessary or appropriate to obtain the grant funding. The city of Riverbank city manager or designee to execute the funding agreement with the Department of Water Resources and any amendments thereto. And the city of Riverbank city manager or designee to submit any required documents, invoices, and reports required to obtain the grant funding. And this is the conclusion of my report. And we have Neil Caldwell, who has a significant history with the analysis of well 10, and he would be more than happy to answer any technical questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
I have a quick question. Does all the rainfall that we have have any negative or positive impact on the situation at all?
It's significant, the significant rainfall that we had in October of 2021, that was that real first heavy rain of that year. And we never really got a significant one after that. A lot of people saw issues with their wells after that. So that heavy amount of water and not having a lot of saturation prior to the ground soaking it up could have pulled additional nitrates into the wells. But with the drought levels and the water levels dropping, it's just getting deeper and deeper, and we're not seeing it at the shallow levels anymore.
Cody, I have a quick question that we've gotten from a couple of residents. As we're looking at Crossroads West and the inevitable decision to make or to construct a new well there, do you foresee that there is a possibility that you may have to construct with wellhead treatment or some other source of treatment in anticipation that the nitrate levels may be the same there as well?
Yes, we are looking into that because the new production well, well number 13, which would be the Crossroads West well, is approximately 1,000 to 1,200 feet away. And it is in the same area. It's on the west side, heavy agriculture area. So nitrates a lot of times come from fertilizers. So it is a strong possibility that that would be the case there, would possibly require wellhead treatment. We are in the process of developing a scope of work for a 1,000-foot-deep test well, which we are required to produce as part of the agreement for the Crossroads West development. So that test well will give us a lot of indication as what to expect as far as if treatment is required.
How much is the new well cost?
Estimated $1.5 to $2.5 million, depending on.
So $1.5 to $2.5 versus $4.3?
Correct.
You could build two wells and still have some change?
It's possible if you don't have the nitrate issues.
True, true. That's why you do your test wells.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I just had to ask that question. Any other questions? Do we have any questions from the public? Saying none, I'm bringing it back for the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item 12.2.
And I'll second.
We have a motion to approve in a second, 12.2, roll call, please.
Councilmember Odebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all staff. I didn't think the last ones. Sorry about that. 13-1 is staff comments.
Just wanted to comment to members of the public that tomorrow Stanislaus County will be holding its point-in-time count of unsheltered residents throughout Stanislaus County. City of Riverbank will be participating in that as well. We will actually be meeting at Scout Hall at 8 o'clock in the morning. If you happen to see any unsheltered or homeless residents that are in need of a hot breakfast and a warm place to stay for a couple of hours, please refer them over to our Scout Hall, which is located at 3017 High Street. We'll have some hot beverages for them, some hot breakfast. And it will help us gather data that we need in order to obtain additional funding, whether it be from the state or the federal government in order to provide assistance to our homeless residents. Thursday, Thursday, not Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff comments? Cody, your turn to come on up and say something again. All right, thank you. For council comments, Councilmember Jones Cruz?
I just want to say it's a pleasure to be here. So I've been under the weather and was able to be at the last council meeting. So back at it and getting stuff done. So I appreciate being here and all of you being here too. Thank you.
Councilmember Odebe?
Thank you, Mayor. Glad to see you here, Jones. So just real quick, so we did have, on Wednesday, January 18th, we did have significant graffiti on several walls at Casper Park. Fortunately, the snack bar with the mural was not tagged. So I'd like to maybe ask the council to kind of consider that going forward. Look at all our parks, any open, you know, blank walls that we can maybe add a mural, kind of prevent this kind of activity would be appreciated. That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
I attended a webinar presented by Cal Cities, the League of Cal Cities regarding cannabis and the new regulations for economic development. And I will be attending the Public Safety Policy Committee meeting on this Thursday. And our focus is to address the fentanyl crisis. That's going to be something that we will continue to discuss as we try to address what's going on in our nation. And then also, I do have a quote from Martin Luther King. And I'll just give it to you real quick. It is darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out, hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And I was just thinking about all of the shootings that we've had in our nation and just to think about just, you know, what we've had with just this year. And it just seems like we've gotten away from the fact that we should be trying to love our neighbors, and we just don't even think about that anymore. So love your neighbor. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I just want to congratulate Hall Works again for their ribbon cutting and grand opening. The family had a family emergency, so they've been closed this week and their first, you know, few weeks of opening. So we wish them well. This last week, I attended a Cal Cities conference for newly electeds. I was elected during the COVID, peak COVID, so I didn't get to attend. But this year, I connected with electors from across the state or across Northern California, mostly who were elected in November. And I was so excited to see so many young people, like 24, 25-year-old mayors and council members, and feeling like the older of the young people at this point. But I'm excited to build relationships with them really. And it was a really good conference. You know, it is also with bittersweet sentiment. I wish you all a happy Lunar New Year with the shooting that happened in Monterey Park and the ongoing shootings. But, you know, I want to emphasize that, you know, we want to be really proactive and creative in how we address our issues and things that, you know, aren't exacerbated here in our city, fortunately, but that we have opportunity to address.
Thank you. For personally, I'd like to know all of our housing for the homeless, all of our initiatives, if I can just brief on that, or for the public. That way, we will all know tiny homes. Sierra House, that's open for business now? Not yet, okay? But it's past November. And so I want to know where we are. I want to know where our deadlines are and what can we do to meet our deadlines, okay? I'm not putting anyone on the spot, except for you. So I also want to know initiatives for those that are homeless and with vehicles. What are we doing to help them out too? The Housing Authority, Stanislaus, the Housing Authority, I'd like to meet with them to get our community center for the seniors, you know, that plan moving and any other additionals that we can have, such as community restrooms downtown and maybe have the businesses take, will build them and businesses can maintain them so they don't have infusion into their restrooms that are not customers. And then there is a new funding for parks for expansion. I'd like to see us apply for that. It's only $6 million. You have to have $6 million matching fund. But Jacob Meyer Park Expansion to the 92 acres to the west or whatever we're going to determine from the Army Corps of Engineers, I'd like to have that looked at, you know, if we can see what the cost is, apply for whatever, 50% of it, so the federal government and state government can assist us in that expansion. With that, we're going to go into closed session. For item 14-1, council with legal, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 Delta, potential case one. At this time, anyone from the public may comment on this item for approximately three minutes before we go. Saying no public comments, we are now in adjournment for a recess for the closed session. Saying no public comments, we are now in adjournment for a recess for the closed session. All right, we reconvene from closed session to discuss item fifteen point one. Report from closed session on item fourteen point one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated legal, uh, with anticipated litigation, direction has been provided to staff. This time this meeting is now adjourned. Our next meeting will be on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. We're gonna, we're gonna be in Valentine mood.